And welcome to the Planning Commission for Tuesday, June 11.
Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Here.
And Chair Chase? And let the record reflect Commissioner Bushhoyer is absent tonight.
Join me and salute to the flag.
The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation for the God invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time in every meeting, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on the agenda tonight. If you've got something to say, there's a podium, you have three minutes. We have people on the run, but nobody's jumping up to contribute to that which is not on the agenda. So we'll close that section unless there's somebody online to comment. I'll get you some boxes.
No hands raised online, Chair Chase.
We close that, and we're going to go straight to our hearings tonight. We have two hearings. One is 635 Meadows Suite Drive, and the second is for Two South Way. So tonight, 635 Meadows Suite Drive is first. And we have a duo listed on the agenda. Well, and it's Claire Smith.
Yes, good evening, Chair Chase Hall. Jumping. I'd like to introduce Claire Smith, she's one of our planning consultants. You may remember her from Roanburgers. She and I worked on that about eight months ago successfully, and Roanburgers is under construction as we speak. Claire has been with us for a year and doing a fantastic job. And so she and I tag team on this one. And so Claire will do the first half of the presentation, and then I'll do the second half.
Great, all right. Take it away.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Chair Chase and Commissioners. Nice to be here again. Like Phil said, we worked closely on this project together. The item is a design review application for residential addition and remodel to the single-family residence at 635 Meadows Suite Drive. The project site at 635 Meadows Suite Drive is at the edge of a large, single-family residential neighborhood. Single-family residences extend into the large neighborhood to the southwest of the project site. To the north is Tamalpais Drive, a major thoroughfare in town that's staggered with commercial uses as well. The project site is approximately 3,760 square feet with an average slope of about 18%, sloping upwards away from Meadows Suite Drive. The existing single-family home was built in the 1940s and has about 1,653 square feet floor area. The home is a split-level style that grows taller as it moves away from the street. It currently consists of three bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. The exterior of the residence is currently asbestos tile that was installed over the original redwood siding. And the windows are wood-framed throughout the residence with the exception of the upper bedroom. The proposed residential remodel and addition includes the demolition of a portion of the rear of the home and replacement with a two-story addition. Overall, the lot coverage will increase by 108 square feet, and the floor area will increase by 546 square feet. On the main level, the addition will accommodate a larger dining room and kitchen and a new pantry and laundry room. On the main level, the addition, or on the top level, the current primary bedroom will be demolished and rebuilt larger, and it will include an en suite bathroom and walk-in closet. Minor site improvements for the project include a new staircase at the rear of the home, removal of a retaining wall, and driveway replacement. Exterior materials for the project include gray painted fiber cement board, chiplapp siding, maroon accent colors, and white window trim. Project site is Zoned R1 Medium Density Residential. On screen are the applicable development standards as required by the ordinance, as well as the existing conditions on the site and the applicant's proposal. The project corrects existing setback non-conformities, and the overall height will increase by about seven feet. The proposed project complies with all development standards in the R1 district. Superscript 1 addresses the applicability of Assembly Bill 1308 to this project, which allows the site to maintain just one parking space. The existing site plan shown on screen outlines the project site in green. You'll notice there's a portion of right-of-way before the front property line. Required setbacks are shown with red callouts, and the resulting buildable area of the site is shown as a blue dash line. Red highlighted areas indicate where the existing residence encroaches into the required setbacks. The proposed project would correct these areas of non-conformance. You'll also see the one covered parking space that is provided in the single-car garage. Here's the proposed site plan, where the proposed structure is outlined in blue. The addition will occur at the rear of the structure, and the general mass scene is outlined with a red dash line. Again, the proposed setbacks this time are shown with the red callouts. The first floor plan we'll look at is at the garage level. At this level, foundation changes are proposed at the rear of the site to support the two-story addition. Additionally, the front porch is moved further from the street, and the encroachments into both sides setbacks are corrected. Next, we have the main level. The main level of the residence is proposed to increase by 228 square feet at the rear. This will create a larger dining room, kitchen, and powder room at the rear of the home, and add space for a laundry room and a pantry. Last, we have the upper level of the home. The existing upper level of the home will be demolished to correct non-conformities at the rear of the structure. The new upper level will still consist of the primary bedroom, but be 271 square feet larger than the existing to accommodate for the en suite bathroom and walk-in closet. From the upper level, there will also be exterior access to the upper terrace of the rear yard. I'll hand it over to Phil for the rest of the presentation.
Great, thank you, Claire. Moving on to elevations, for showing you the north elevation or the front. Being changed, this elevation would be the new addition at the rear of the home, which extends the same roof pitch as the existing. The addition will increase the maximum height of the building to 28 feet 1 inch, with two visible small windows, as you can see, have been added. Another way to describe this is, you know, the two-story element or the upper element of the home is shifting from being on the east side of the building to the west side of the building. It's kind of a shift from one side to the other. The next elevation will show, existing and proposed, is the west side. And that will feature two new windows on the upper level of the addition, where there's previously just one and larger window. And the lower level will feature two new windows and a new side door. Again, you can see that the new upper second-story element is brought closer, you know, from the east elevation to the west elevation. And next, moving to the east elevation. This will also have two new windows at the rear, and will slightly modify some of the existing windows, although the total number of windows will remain the same. And the applicant is also proposing two skylights. And lastly, looking at the rear elevation or the south, there will be three new windows there, where there currently are, or three windows there, where there currently are four, and a rear door, stair access to the upper terrace of the backyard, as Claire mentioned earlier. So again, it's another example of the shifting from one side of the building to the other. I also do want to point out, and Claire had mentioned the exterior materials that are being proposed. There's a materials board that's up for your, up there at the dais for your review. Next, I wanted to address, thank you, Peter. Next, I wanted to address neighborhood outreach. The applicant reached out quite early to the neighbors back in January of this year, prior to submitting the planning application, to inform the neighbors of the project and also gauge their concerns. The applicant provided project plans and project description and shared his contact information. The applicant and staff received responses from a few of the neighbors, some with concerns and others with support. Once the story poles were installed, which was the middle of last month or so, the applicant received, more comments were received from the surrounding neighborhood. And on that note, I just want to point out that, you may recall, this project was originally scheduled for May 28, and it was postponed or moved to this date so the applicant could continue to work with the neighbors. And the graphics shown here shows the letters of, the letter of support in pink, comments and concerns that have been expressed to the town, both in writing and verbally. And then also, the yellow dots are showing the homes where the applicant reached out to them and sent them all a personal message, but they did not respond. And of course, this is just a small subset of the 350, 300-foot radius that we send out our notice to. And then now to talk about the view discussion, to talk about views. These are photographs from 639 Meadows Suite, which is two homes to the east of the project site. So if you look, you see that gray roof on the right, that's the home in between this home and the project site. As you see, you'll see the story poles there, a view of Mount Tam and a view of the skyline. Staff met with the owners of 639 Meadows Suite and took these pictures. The larger one on the left is from their primary bedroom, standing approximately two feet away at my height, roughly 5'6". Without, as we standard, our standard photography method, no zoom is used whatsoever, just a standard cellphone photograph. The one in the upper right is from their lower rear yard, looking basically at the doorway that I believe connects their kitchen to the side, to this rear yard. And so I'm just standing at that doorway, looking towards the site, where you can see the existing upper level portion of the home and the proposed, and the story poles. To the bottom right is a view of, up above, a little higher on their yard, looking in the same direction. You can see it's mainly, this time, it's mainly blocked by that vegetation. So that's the view discussion, or the, you know, the view analysis that we have and that we've discussed in the staff report. Okay, next, Tracy, please. Next, the applicant provided a shadow study, a standard shadow study, four times in the year, three hours, three different hours of the day, morning, noon, and night, and evening, basically, and showing the existing and then proposed shadows that this building creates. That full step, that full shadow study is in your packet, and this is just a small subset, basically a glimpse of really the worst, the worst conditions in, through that shadow study. And the worst conditions, at least in our opinion, are these four, and the red, the red squares and the red triangle, the red polygons, is showing you the added shading that the shadow study is showing. So upper right is summer evening, slight impact to the neighbor to the, to the east. Upper right is spring and fall morning, impact to the neighbor to the west. And then similar, bottom left, spring and summer, fall, evening. Currently, the shadow stretches all the way out, but just that little red square is what's added with the addition. And then to the, to the bottom right is the winter morning. Basically, there's a kind of a sliver of a triangle on the upper left of that shaded area. So that's our assessment of the shading impacts from the addition. And the next discussion we have is privacy. And privacy impacts, this is, these photos are taken, neighbor to the west, which is 633 Meadows Suite. Again, both 633 and 639 submitted comments to you all that you have regarding their concerns about the project. So privacy impacts, one could also, I guess, could, could say view impacts as well. But I think one of their, their main concerns, what I heard, we heard from them, is the privacy impacts. And put the, we put the west elevation next to it, so you can see, again, that element is being brought to the west, and that element has, has these two windows, which the applicant has informed us have a sill height of four feet 6 inches. And those two windows are for the primary bedroom, the new primary bedroom that he is added, adding. That is our, our view of privacy impacts. And moving on to the options that we have, we're presenting to you as the commission. Your options are to approve a motion directing staff to prepare a resolution approving design review, and staff will return to the commission with that resolution. Your second option is to request us to provide you with a resolution not approving the project and denying the project. And your third option is to have the project continued to a future date. As you probably noticed, we have not provided, we've, well, we've provided a, called a neutral recommendation. We're not able to unequivocally make the findings of the project. And perhaps you can jump to the next one, Tracy? Thank you. And so our recommended, recommendation and conclusion is that this application balances most of the needs and considerations of both the applicant and the neighboring properties. Staff has provided a neutral recommendation based on the recent development of the alternative, which the applicant will probably, will talk about. Understanding neighborhood, neighbors concerned, and staff's inability to make all of the required findings. Staff recommends that the commission include in its motion directing staff to return to a future commission with the appropriate resolution for consideration, or like we say in the, in our third option, just, you know, continue the, continue the project to another day, if that's your wish. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you very much. We have the, we have the design review findings. If you want to go into details of any of those or any questions about them. We also have on the screen or on the computer, we can bring up the alternative that the applicant has provided in the packet and will speak about. And then, and that's all we've got. And we also have the entire set of plans, so if there's specific sheets you want to return, you want to discuss, we can bring those up on the screen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the way we'll do this tonight is that we'll discuss with staff any questions that we have for this project, and then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll have public comment on it, and then we'll deliberate about this. But I think that we want to hear about the options. And what I'm going to ask the other Commissioners, if they have any questions before we present those options, just to take anything off the table that's significant, and then we'll go into the options, which are very important. Do you guys have any questions that you want to ask staff now, or do you want to wait until after the options?
I'd like to wait. I'd like to wait and hear the options.
Great. That's, that's a good consensus. I think that we have, in the packet, the plans had those options, and you've got them on slide to show everybody. I'd like some clarity with those options, so let's dive into that.
When you, Commissioner Chase, when you say options, are you referring to the alternative?
Yes.
Okay.
The wardroof option.
Yeah, yeah, so it's up to you. Would you like us to present the alternative, or would you like the applicant? We have not, just to clarify, we have not analyzed the alternative in terms of the findings. We have seen it, he has shown it to the neighbors.
So, but you have them on the laptop to put on screens.
Yes, yeah, we can, we can show that.
Go through them quickly.
And there's just one.
One, okay. All right, well, let's put it up so that the audience here can see it, and we can incorporate that into the review so that we see it, and then we'll let the applicant make the presentation.
Sure, absolutely.
Great.
Bringing it up right now.
Just a note while we're waiting, that Commissioners are advised to put your face into the mic so everyone can hear. The, the sound is kind of coming in and out from what we've heard.
I'll make that effort.
Thank you, Tracy. So.
Oh, you want to explain what you got here, so.
Sure. And again, I will, I, we will give a brief presentation of it, but I think, you know, the applicant is the most knowledgeable about this alternative. And just want to make sure I have.
And give us a little history on how this came to be as an alternative.
Sure, sure. So, so first to describe the alternative, this is the north elevation and west elevation of the alternative. And it's fundamentally, as you can see, to the, the second story, to the right, you know, that gable is fundamentally just being dropped. And I believe a foot and a half, Kurt? A foot one, okay. So, so that gable, and you have a pointer, no, we don't have a pointer. So that, you can see the dash line, yeah, thank you, Tracy. You can see the dash line, so that's, that's original plan. And then two foot one drop-down is the alternative proposed. So he's dropped that roof height, and also, at the same time, right, in both cases, and also, at the same time, the applicant has created a gable element facing east. And we'll, we'll see that next, and then better elevations. So that's really the, the big change in this, in this, these two elevations. And now our next slide shows, and it's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky because I'm not showing, we don't, we're not showing you the original and the alternative next to each other. But again, on the left is the south of the rear, and that ridge is just being dropped down, just being lowered, no change in pitch or anything. And to the right, you have the east elevation, and that's where you can see that gable, that small gable without any windows or, or anything. That is provided according to the applicant's description to us. He has added that element to allow there to be adequate ceiling height in the bathroom. So that was, that's what brought about that need to create that gable. And he can explain it much better than I, so the ability, it sounded like, the ability to just drop the south elevation and the north elevation was not possible, was difficult, and so he added that, that gable element on the east elevation.
Did, Phil, did the wall heights change, or just the roof scheme? The lower, the ceiling height?
I call it the wall heights because it could be vaulted, yeah, you know, where the ceiling starts. So the original plan had eight-foot ceilings and then 10-foot ceilings, so. Yeah, okay, because that would make a big difference.
And, and I guess I'll go back to your question, Chair Chase. You asked what facilitated this alternative. Again, the applicant can speak to that best, but I believe the facilitation of this alternative came about due to concerns that the neighbors expressed, and he wanted, he wanted to address those concerns.
Good, okay. Well, that's out there, and I think that now that we've gotten that far, before we get the applicant up there, now we can sort of ask questions. Jim, we're on the same vein, I was just going to say we query the applicant's, all that wall height and all that stuff. Yeah. So, okay. Anything else you'd like to ask staff before we go to the applicant?
I have, I have some.
Go, go ahead, then.
Oh, so I'm curious about the right-of-way easement in the front. Do we know if that's a utility easement or a street easement? It seems like it's a, it's quite a large chunk of their property, the whole street, actually, yeah. So it's just a right-of-way street easement, it's not, it's not utility. And my second question is, did the applicant fill out any findings?
Did the applicant fill out any findings?
Yeah, I mean, isn't it, isn't that part of the application process?
Yes, yes, he did. He provided, when one submits the design review checklist, it includes the findings. Yeah.
You guys said you had those on the laptop there, not his response, but the findings required.
Oh, no, what I mentioned earlier is that we, we have the required findings that the code stipulates, that we almost always provide to you at the, at the end of a meeting. So those are just, yeah, we can bring it, but, you know, one of the key findings is, does the project significantly impact natural light, view, and privacy? So that's just, and then, and then the applicant submits that to us, and he or she provides their answer. And then we, if we were providing a recommendation, we would in detail answer that question based upon our analysis of the project. But we have not provided that, given we're not proposing a recommendation at this time.
Okay, I was just curious why we wouldn't have seen that their findings, the applicant's findings as part of the.
Yes, we didn't, we certainly could have provided them, but we, we chose not to just speak, and we can certainly get those to you if you like.
Well, we can talk through them, I just, they were filled out as part of the application. Thank you. I think that's all with questions for me.
Thank you. Margaret, does anything come to mind?
In, in one of the letters that I read from the neighbors, they, they mentioned an attic. Is there an attic?
The, we can bring up the, on the plan set, the sections, and that shows, I mean, I would say there are attic spaces there, to my knowledge, and the applicant, there's not a, an attic which has, you know, an access or a ladder or any, you know, sort of formal attic proposed for storage or living space, to my knowledge.
So it's just, it's like more of a crawl area?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, an attic is a general, you know, a general term for a space between the top of the ceiling and that, and some people have formal attic. And some people have formal attics. This is not, these, these spaces there shows that there are not formal attics. Attics. They're not, they're not, you know, it's not all connected. Your individual ones over. There's a fairly unusual building with its number, with, it's a split level. And there's a lot of different roof planes and.
And is for the, the alternative that is proposed, you know, that we just, you just described. Is there any way to sort of simulate what story poles in the alternative would look like? And does a computer do that? Or do they have to put up real story poles?
To really show it, you would need to put up real story poles. And that would be, you know, lowering, lowering those story poles and those tapes for that one ridge. And then creating new story poles and new tapes for the, the new.
So we wouldn't know about the view unless the alternative story poles were actually installed.
Correct. And wouldn't really know the shadow study unless the shadow study was done based upon the alternative.
All right, thank you, Margaret. Dan?
I have one question. On the staff report, page four, second paragraph. If the project would eliminate non-conformities by demolishing the rear portion of the home, can you explain what that is?
Yeah, so currently the upper level extends into the rear yard setback. And so when there, there's going to be a demolition of the existing upper level. And then when it's rebuilt, it's going to be pushed back into the setback. Do you mind pulling up the existing proposed site plan? So Tracy's going to present the existing site plan. And we have highlighted in red at the rear. That's a portion of the existing up, upper level, which is still the primary bedroom currently. That extends into that rear yard setback. And so with the project, if you switch to the proposed, when that two-story addition is rebuilt, it's going to be within that rear setback. And you can see that 25-foot dash line and how that kind of gets pushed further into the lot.
On table one, you're showing the existing setback as 22 feet and the rear yard requirement 25.
Yeah, so currently that red portion is only 22 feet from the rear yard. And so, or from that rear property line. And then it'll get pushed into that 25.
What else, Daniel? Is that it for the moment? Yeah, okay. All right, so I think it's time then to ask the applicant to make a presentation. And show us what he's got, if he's got anything to put on screen or.
Okay. Sorry that I'm a little nervous. I've never done this before.
That's all right.
Um, my name's Kurt. I'm the owner and designer and applicant of six three five Meadow Suite. I'm a first time homeowner. And I kind of stumbled across this property through a real estate agent that I kind of just like randomly met. And ended up bidding on it and had my bid accepted it out like four days later. So it's kind of this like very odd thing that I came, I came about this house. It was really clear from the first time that I walked into it that I was going to need a lot of work and that. It was going to take a, a really particular person in order to take this project on. Because it's probably too much work for a developer to flip quickly and like make sure to get a profit on. And way too much for a typical owner, homeowner to take on because there's just so much work involved. And so I, it was just sort of a, a nice fit where I have this niche where I can kind of take the cost on of, you know, my design expertise and leveraging that in order to turn it into a project that actually like made sense. The property as it existed, if you want to click to the next slide. And though, like without kind of getting into too many details, the, the property that, that I ended up buying was in really bad shape, like to the point where there were like very, very clear life and safety concerns and fire hazard concerns that I witnessed. Like from the moment I stepped on the property. Highly flammable liquids being stored in the setback, like feet away from the neighboring properties. There were four abandoned cars that were inoperable. Construction materials from what I gathered, and I, I don't really have that much information. But I don't think that there was anybody even like living in there full time. And the house was essentially functioning as a storage unit and a junkyard. The first thing that I did, including like dealing with the previous owner showing up on the property unannounced, was hire a junk haul crew to get the site cleaned up as quickly as possible because it was such a safety concern. And, you know. You know, it was a very, very extensive site cleanup. There were four vehicles that were removed. There was a cement mixer in the back, construction scaffolding. There was a 3,500 pound metal lathe in the garage that was removed. Like a very, very extensive site cleanup that was involved as my initial first step. So if you want to, or the next thing. The other thing I wanted, the next thing that I wanted to address was my chair Rizzo came to the site yesterday and asked why I decided to keep the house, the existing house. And I just wanted to show you kind of like a more extensive photos of the streetscape. The, the architectural condition of the street is very specific. Where they were all built at the same time and don't resemble each other. They're actually like identical. My house is identical to six three nine. Six three three and six three seven are also identical. And so for the sake of keeping the language of the street front and, and like keeping the history of the community intact. I decided to make the less cost effective of the decision of keeping the house, the existing house and renovating. Next slide, please. The next thing that I wanted to make note of is a public nuisance, like meeting minutes from a public nuisance complaint that was made back in 2013. To just show how long this property has been. Basically an eyesore and a burden on the community at large. If you read the highlighted sections, the owner of six three three Meadow Suite, which is occupied by a tenant. He essentially said that the condition has gotten worse since he bought the house. And it had been in that condition with cars and junk in the side yard stored since he bought the house in 1989. So that's kind of the, the, I just wanted to kind of really express and emphasize how long this has been going on and how long the house has been neglected. There should be five pages. Yeah. Yeah, so the next thing I wanted to know, and some of these photos are in the submittal as well on the existing site photos page. But I just wanted to know, just show you where the setback encroachments were and like, you know, show other conditions of the house. The, the upper left and upper middle photos are at the front staircase. It's currently like literally fractured in pieces and being held up by hydraulic jacks. There are setback encroachments that I'm correcting. I'm abating asbestos siding and the lead paint below it. There's exposed wiring inside of the house. Windows are falling out of their frames. The ceiling in the back bathroom has caved in since I made my, since I made my submittal. There's extensive water damage. The front door swelled shut last winter. And there's also running water that comes down the interior of the living room walls when it rains. There are signs of black mold. And I'm also expecting extensive rot when I do. As you know, all of this, all of this adds up to a very, very heavy price tag in construction. And in addition to making the, like adding on the additional square footage, like to get the house to perform and function the way that I want. I also need to do it out of necessity. I cannot afford to fix this house up unless I add on the actual, the additional square footage. It just doesn't pencil out. And everything that I did, like all of the things that you saw in the, in the proposal, like with the height increase. Don't going, like that was done in mind with, with the fact that I was also pulling back from the rear setback. Because I knew that it would help the shadows and I knew that it would help alleviate the impact of the view. Like I'm, you know, I don't, the neighbors have been very, very lovely since I moved in and I'm. You know, it's like I, I don't exactly know how to balance the fact that what I'm doing is impacting them without also like keeping myself from like being able to financially afford the project. And that's kind of the situation I'm in. And I don't exactly know like how to go about what I'm doing without, you know, like impacting the, the neighbors that are, that are, you know, addressing concerns. I'm kind of trying to do the project in a way that proposes a net benefit from the community at large despite how the people closest to the project are getting affected. Because when I inherited the house, it was really dangerous. And it's still not like now that it's like there's immediate danger has been alleviated, but nobody can move in like because there are structural concerns. There are health concerns with mold and rot. And, you know, it's like I know how to fix it, but I need to do it in a way that doesn't, you know, bury me in debt. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from. You know, just hope that that's kind of seen in the proposal. To answer some of the questions in the alternative proposal, the wall heights in the upper bedroom in the original proposal were 10 feet high. And when I lowered the roof ridge, I lowered the ceiling, the internal ceiling height, one foot to nine. So. Yeah, if you want to pull it up because it's probably going to be a point of discussion.
Are there any sections you've drawn of the upper level or this change similar to the section you had in the original?
No, I haven't. And I apologize for that. The, this is the first time I've managed a project on my own, in addition to also being the owner. So this whole process has been kind of overwhelming. So, and I'm, I'm doing this on top of working, like running my own firm full time. So I kind of, when the, when the meeting got pushed back, I kind of put all my clients all on hold for a couple of weeks. And had to kind of spend time to catch up on the work for my clients before I went back to address a lot of these issues.
Please go ahead and explain this section to us if you can, and add any information about it.
Yeah, so the, the diagonal dotted line over the, the roof drawn in, in the drawing is the original proposed roof height. I was attempting to keep intact the, the salt box roof style of the home. That was something that I kind of initially noticed right away. I have familial roots in Pennsylvania Dutch country. And those houses are very common there. And I kind of like looked up some history about the town. And it seems to be like there's a lot of like these houses sprinkled through that are sort of West Coast knockoffs of these like very Americana northeastern buildings. And I tried to actually emphasize that in my paint colors as well. And I, I sort of chose a very sort of northeastern Wedgewood blue with a, with a red door to kind of tie in the, the East Coast roots of the architecture style while also sort of like referencing the Golden Gate over there.
Okay. So in this section, this elevation that you have in front of us. You've dropped it by two foot something.
Yeah, two, two foot one. The other thing that I should mention is that when my chair Rizzo came on to the property yesterday. It was very clear that he had a lot of construction experience. And he questioned the, the slope of my, the roof that I had modeled in. And, you know, kind of pointed and he goes, you can measure the roof right there and pointed to the hole of where the ceiling in the bedroom collapsed. And I measured the roof slope and he's correct, the roof slope that's modeled in is wrong. I, I, and like to the, to the benefit of like lowering the, the roof height. So the slope is a five over 12, not a six over 12. And so the overall height of the alternative proposal would actually be 24 foot 11, which is an additional foot lower than the alternative presents. So I, that was, and the story poles, I should emphasize that the story poles are. So I, that was, and the story polls, I should emphasize that the story polls are modeled or are built from grade with the wrong roof slope. So the story polls reflect the drawings. And so there, there's an overall that the overall changes in reality is actually going to be three foot.
Okay, that's good to know. What else do you want to tell us about what you've designed and this alternative? Anything in particular?
I basically tried to design an alternative roof type because like the, you know, it's, it's very, very clear from the photos in the proposal that the ones that are getting the most impact are the neighbors at 633, the neighbors that are immediately adjacent to my right or to the, and to the west. And I was, I met with them on site, one-on-one and walked through their house to see what it looked like from their point of view. And, you know, I, I knew that I basically knew that they were the ones that were going to take the heaviest hit. The neighbors at 639, 639 reached out with immediate concerns when they saw the proposal in terms of their view being blocked. And that was good information to have and I made, made sure to keep that in mind and, and told them to send me a picture when the stories polls went up and also kind of assured that I was doing what I could to basically, you know, let them know that I was going further up, but the house was also going to be pulled in three feet. And so they're like, she mostly expressed concern about the ridgeline being blocked. And, you know, my response was the setbacks being, the setback encroachment is being alleviated and you're actually getting more of the, the ridgeline exposed. I was blocking more sky, but exposing more of the ridgeline.
Okay. Thank you for expressing where you've come from this, where you landed your efforts. I want to summarize and tell me if I've got anything wrong or you want to add to it. Right? So you bought this house and you're adding square footage to it because you need to add the square footage to make it a financially feasible.
Yeah. Well, the, in addition to that, the, the square footage is coming in because of multiple building code infractions that are currently existing and also like outdated, you know, modes of living. All of the bedroom closets are only two and a half feet wide.
That's all fine. I just want to, excuse me for interrupting. I just want to say what I heard you say and then I want you to affirm it. And then the other commissioners will ask you some questions too. So you've, you've sort of apologized to the neighbors for creating a high wall and a visual impact on their property because you're adding this height.
Yeah.
I heard you express that awareness that that's going on.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I think that I'll let the other commissioners weigh in to see if they feel like they've gotten a good read of the project from you. They'll ask you questions. I think it's important for them to understand what your intention is and where you're going with this and they may have some specifics. I'm, I'm going to say that given the information about the elevations and the plans and the story polls, that I think that we're going to have to vote to talk about that being corrected. So, but I'm going to go to you guys now. You can ask questions of the applicant. So, Jim.
Actually, sorry if I can, I'm sorry if I can interrupt Mr. Commissioner Rizzo. I did, did just pass out the findings that the applicant provided to us with his early submittal.
They're also on page A, A 0.1 of the submittal.
Thank you.
First question, there wasn't a demolition plan included. And from what I can gather from the new plan, it looks like just about everything's going to be, all the MEPs demolished, mechanical electrical plumbing. Just about everything's demolished. The roof in the living room is gone. Basically just the roof over the bedrooms are staying.
The, the, I would say probably the front 30 to 35% of the house is remaining as far as the framing goes. Anything that's salvageable will remain. So like the living room, the living room, the two lower bedrooms, as far as like the exterior framing and the roofing goes from the dining room back on the left and from the wall on the back of the back bedroom is getting demolished.
But I, I believe that there's also a vault in the living room that needs to be reframed so that it's coming off and then.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the roof will either be demolished and rebuilt or assisted for structural support.
So that, I know that you had mentioned at one point that I, I have a question about the lower floor because I think when you lowered the upper floor to nine feet, nine foot walls, you were saying that the lower floor is eight feet, but you wanted those to be nine foot walls.
Yes.
That would require reframing those walls or putting a, a beam on them.
The, that's, that's south of the living room. So those, those exterior walls are getting demolished anyway.
So the living room is going to have eight foot ceilings with a vault?
Yeah.
Eight foot walls with a vault? Not nine foot, so this, okay.
Cause the walk-in closet, beginning of the second story starts at the beginning of the dining room.
Okay.
Where the two-story addition starts.
Okay. And then we did talk about the master bedroom, third floor and scheme two is nine feet tall. But the lower floor is eight feet tall or they nine foot tall?
The new living, I'm sorry, the new dining room, kitchen and the new program, like the pantry laundry room, that's all nine feet as well. It's currently eight, three.
So there could be an opportunity to go to eight feet and drop it another two feet and keep the vault upstairs. So you have a nice volume in the living and, and your master.
The, I wouldn't want to go below eight, six on the bottom floor because I'm planning, I'm, I'm going to propose underfloor heating. So my floor assembly is going to get thicker.
Okay. Next question is I, would we be able to bring up sheet A 0.5 please? The reason I wanted to bring this up is because we have to weigh this against one of the findings and, and, you know, one of the findings is how this is in scale and harmonious with the neighborhood properties and how this balances your needs as a homeowner with the impacts of the neighbors' light views and sunlight. So in your own words, since we didn't have the findings at the beginning of this, would you please explain how that might, how your interpretation of that finding?
Yeah, so this drawing is to me a bit misleading. The house, the, the houses on either side of me are the smallest houses on the street. If you look at 639 to the right, their house is literally identical to mine, including the 1960s addition on the back. It might even be a little bit taller because they've got a a floor below it. It's built in while like right, right now mine is open, so a walk under. The house that's also down the street, I think it's 643 Meadow Suite is also a similar height to my house as well. So the houses to either side of me are exceptionally small.
Okay, so, you know, Jim asked you a question about how it fits in. That's your response that you think?
Oh, so, so I, I will say it, it is approximately a half story taller than the houses to either side. When you extend the neighborhood context out further, the height changes only around three and a half to four feet.
Okay, so that's how you interpret that finding and that's what you put forward?
Yeah, within the context of the neighborhood, even like as far as like the condition of how the height of the home meets the setback requirement, how there's a two-story wall up against this, right up against the setback line that happens multiple times through the neighborhood. And so my interpretation of that was that I was meeting the needs of the neighbors by staying within precedent and in the immediate vicinity.
Okay, Jim, next question.
You know, I think that's it. I just wanted to confirm that wall heights and just to talk about that because those are the two findings that are kind of sticking.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Margaret, do you have something to ask?
Yeah, first I have a question about 637. You contacted them but got no response.
637 is occupied by a tenant. And we have, we have talked extensively. She's actually been a very, very huge help and support. She's a contractor. And so she is actually the one that patched up the windows when the house was broken in by vandals and made the side yard more secure. She's also has cameras up and has just like let me know when I left the lights on and whatnot. Since she's a tenant, she did not feel like she had the power to respond and I am unsure if the owner was contacted or not.
Were you able to take any photos from her house of the story polls?
No, I, I haven't, but she knows, she noted that she has additional shadows in the backyard. Privacy isn't, isn't a concern from her property because the existing condition is already windows with low sill heights right up next to her property line. And she has built essentially like a privacy roof over her backyard. And so if that wasn't there, I could probably see right into her back windows and into her backyard right now.
And how long has she lived there? Do you have any idea?
I don't know, but a while from what I, oh, there you are. See you there.
How many?
Yeah.
And I had a question. One of the sheets had a sort of colored in drawing with a blue. Was that the blue you're proposing for the color?
Yeah, it's sort of the, the paint swatches on the material board. It's a Wedgewood, kind of like gray, blue.
This is quite different than the painting. So this is what you're proposing?
Yeah. And that's like a, the drawing is a marker drawing that's also been scanned in. So the colors are a bit.
Bright.
Off, yeah. The idea is that I chose both a red and a blue that were sort of like in between that would change with the light and the fog throughout the year. Where it's, sometimes it looks blue, sometimes it looks gray, sometimes it actually looks kind of green and then the red sort of looks kind of red orangey depending on the type of light that it's in.
Anything else, Margaret?
And, and you said you were going to do something about the driveway. Is that correct?
Yes, so currently the driveway is packed with rock on part of it because the sewage tie-in, I replaced the sewage tie-in since I've purchased the property as have many of the other neighbors because that sewer main was just redone. And so the, I didn't have them pave the, patch up the driveway because I'm going to replace it anyway.
And may not want to answer this, but I'll try anyway. Is it your intention to live there or are you fixing it up to sell?
So I'm, I don't know. And a lot of that determined, it is going to be determined by money and cost. I want to move in, but I don't know if I'm going to be able to afford to. And a lot of it depends on how the project pencils out, what you all will let me build and also sort of like how extensive the existing structure is going to need to be repaired and replaced when we demo.
What do you expect the timeline of this to be?
When, from building approval, I don't know. Couple of the guys on the board could probably answer that more accurately than me, but I would hope, I'm hoping to get it built within nine months. Is that accurate?
There was one.
Or?
Cough, cough.
Yeah.
There was one issue or someone asked for an asbestos abatement plan. Would, would you be willing to provide that?
Yes, so, so my, my response to her was that, so I, I got the asbestos tile tested and it is in fact asbestos tile. My, my response to her was that it would be removed in accordance to code and the means and methods of that would be determined by the contractor. The code is, the code that we have to abate asbestos in California is very thorough and efficient and so I would, you would abide by those laws.
Okay, thank you. Daniel.
Do you plan to add any solar panels to the project?
Yes, the, the house, what I'm planning on for the house is to go all electric and solar ready with an on-demand water heater for both the the sinks and showers. for both the um, the sinks and showers, et cetera, as well as the um, under-floor heating. Um, the last house that I designed for a client um, is net zero and she hasn't paid an electricity bill since she moved in. Uh, and I'm hoping to achieve the same goals with this house.
And um, on the siding, um, it was a little unclear as you removed the asbestos. Uh, I think you were saying that the redwood siding was, was usable. You would try to stay with that?
Yes, that, that was um, that's sort of a, an outdated hypothesis. Uh, it does not look like it would be um, practical to save it because um, of fire safety issues as well as um, lead paint.
And could you explain, maybe already didn't, I missed it, um, the demolition relative to what the comment Commissioner Rizno made about the height of the ceiling in the um, the dining room, kitchen area, um, what it is now and how you're, if it's, if it's being increased to nine feet?
Yeah, so the um, the existing ceiling height is in the dining room in the kitchen is eight foot three. Um, I think it's lower in the back, existing back bathroom, which is very, very not code-compliant at all. And I am proposing um, a nine-inch increase um, to um, nine feet below. Um, like I stated previously, um, part of that is going to, and that, that's kind of with my and my uh, current floor thickness recommendations. I am planning to install under-floor heating, which is typically takes up, I, I usually estimate, like overestimate, you know, two and a half to three inches. I shouldn't say overestimate. I estimate roughly two and a half to three inches for that system. Um, and so it would, it'll probably be um, about uh, eight foot six or, sorry, um, eight foot nine, an increase of six inches.
And to accomplish that, you're, you're?
Yeah, that second.
Demolishing the roof above?
Yeah, that whole section on the rear of the house is getting demolished. There's um, that's where uh, two of the three setback encroachments occur. There's a CMU um, wall with a washer and dryer in it, like off the kitchen, um, that encroaches into the setback. Um, and the, the upper bedroom, that's where the upper bedroom is. The upper bedroom kind of juts out from over that um, rear half-bath. So that's all getting knocked down.
Okay. All right, staff question for you guys about this. Um, and I'm going to leave my comments when we're going to have a discussion here about many things. But I think that I want to get clear on a couple of things. So right now, if they demo, if this gentleman demos more than fifty percent of the building, does that change anything about the application? If he starts finding he has to tear down more than what's on, sketchily put on plan? Is there a problem with the application?
Um, no, I mean, if, if he began the project and decided to take down that house completely, um, because his new project meets all the setbacks, he's not taking advantage of existing non-conforming setbacks by keeping walls. So it would not be an issue.
Right, okay. Um, I think that um, we'll, we'll get into some discussion about various elements of this when we talk about it here and we'll bring you back up to the podium, I think, and get to express some specifics to you. I think it's necessary. So um, unless we have anything else, I'm going to say let's get to public comment for this. And then we'll see if anybody in the room wants to get up. There are neighbors here, I believe, so we want to hear from them, anybody online. So thank you, Kurt, and we'll start with people in the room here. So you're here, presuming you want to make a comment, so. Tracy, are you going to do a timer? Thank you.
Hi, uh. My name's Mark Disler. I live at six thirty Manzanita Avenue in Coeur d'Alene. And remodeling the house is welcomed, um, but uh, all of a sudden I saw these story poles go up and I was like, what's going on? I, I wasn't even aware it was sold. But um, but then I was in contact with, with Phil and he put me in contact with Kurt and we did a Zoom meeting and discussed, discussed the project. Uh, all the homes below me are not in my eyesight and all of a sudden that, that pops up. And I guess a few things, one, you know, one is it, it is in my sight now. And when I looked at it, I was like, well, why is there a six-foot attic space? And I noticed, uh, in my mind, and maybe Kurt can address this, but in my mind, the original house roof line stops like this, right? But then he extends it, right? And then it meets like that. Why not come up to, you know, come up a little bit to, to where it is or a little bit past? And then you can keep the same angle because to him, the angle of the roof was important. Um, so you keep the same angle, but you could bring it, just extend this part longer instead of this being extended. If this was extended, it, it would reduce the height of the house. I think it would look much better from, from the front. It'd be, if his intentions are to sell it, it'd be much easier to sell because it's just kind of this, just kind of a section that just kind of pops up and in my, my opinion, doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. You know, the, the bedroom is over ten foot, but which, you know, if he wants a tall ceiling, I, I get that. But, but uh, a six-foot attic space, I think there's a lot of room in there to, to play with the roof line and to, to adjust things. And um, if there's solar on top of it as well, then I'm going to be seeing that as well. So that's, that's pretty much my point, I guess. Um, honestly, I think that if that's brought down, it'd have much more appeal to, to buyer. I don't, I don't know, you were talking about, you know, you don't know fully what's going to, what you're going to get into on this project, right? Have you thought about taking it all down and building new? Because a new construction is going to have much more value than uh, than, than a remodel, right? I think everybody can be in agreement on that. And then you could build, um, uh, you could probably even dig, that's a very steep driveway going up. You might be able to dig down and then build up. So I, I, I don't know if you've thought about that or looked into that. I suggested the roof earlier to him. I don't know if you looked into that idea. I'm not uh, as, I'm not a builder. Um, I know a little bit about remodeling and things like that. So my knowledge is limited, but just some suggestions and uh, it just, in my mind, it looks out of place for the neighborhood a, a, as it currently is. We're more, I think everybody wants to see it remodeled. Um, but uh, but how it's done is what's most important because we have to live with that for a long time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right.
Good evening. I'm Yossi Farahmand. I've lived at six, three, nine Meadow Suite for over ten years. I reside there with my husband and our one-year-old. Um, the six, three, five property, two doors down from us, has definitely been in need of some attention and more than a few improvements for some time. Um, I was glad to hear it was sold, although I never heard it was on the market. Um, we did hear that the, the former owners did, so, sold it, the home to Kurt, an architect. Um, he introduced himself to us early on and was upfront that he was an architect and would likely not be living in the home. Um, he appeared to be, it appeared to be a project he would be selling once he fixed it up. None of the, none of that concerned me too much initially. Um, it seemed, it seemed to be like in the end, it would be an improvement for the neighborhood. When we saw the initial plans shared by Kurt, my husband and I noticed, noticed the height increase right away. We knew it would greatly impact our view from our primary bedroom. Once the story poles went up, it was confirmed. Even with a five-foot height increase, we lose the right-side ridge of Mount Tam, which was noted in our last home appraisal. Um, you showed the pictures from our bedroom when uh, the staff came over and I have to be honest, it shows it, but when you're there in person, I think it, it's much larger um, in, in real life. Um, additionally, we lose sun sooner in the day in our view of the sunset. Uh, sitting up in our bread, reading on a weekend morning, the addition is the majority of our large window view in our, in our bedroom. Uh, it appears our concerns fall under uh, the Town of Coeur d'Alene's general plan document section, Goals, Policies and Implementation Programs for Land Use, uh, Policy LU dash two-point-eight. Views shall be considered when evaluating new residential development proposals, including additions to existing homes consistent with community design policies, CD dash one-point-four and CD dash one-point-five, but also Policy LU dash two-point-four, uh, which is to ensure that new residential development and upgrades to existing residential development are compatible with existing neighborhood character and structures. Our concern is that this home addition is incompatible and would tower over the other modest nineteen forty homes it shares a street with. It appears the home on our street, that it appears that the homes on our street may be closer than most in Coeur d'Alene, and that is a key factor in the proposed height having a lasting negative impact, impact to the multiple neighbors of six, three, five who do live in their homes. And therefore, we will be living with the end result of this potential flip um, for long, for a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Anna Postenbach. I live at six, three, three Meadow Suite, which is next door to this property, just to the west. And I've lived there for about six years with my husband, who's also here over Zoom. Um, and I just want to say in general, we really are very supportive of this house getting care. It's very obvious it's needed and we're really grateful that Kurt really wants to do it justice and I see that. We just want to make clear though, that we think that the current plans, even the revised ones down two feet, is still very tall. Um, you saw some of our pictures in the presentation. The current height really does have significant impact over our home as well as our backyard. Um, we have shade and privacy concerns as well as just the basic concern of we have much more limited view of even the sky with the current plans. Um, so it, it feels rather looming and it's by far, it would be the largest home on the street. Um, so I'll keep it really brief. I do think we can come to a solution. But I do think it is, it's a bit too tall, even on the slightly revised plan about two feet lower. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sarah Schultz and I live at six, three, seven Meadow Suite. And one of the reasons I didn't send anything in is because I feel that I'm just a renter and I correct myself. I've been there for twenty-three years now. Um, two concerns I have, one, for me visually, it doesn't fit in. But two is when the construction goes on, I'm on the east side of the property. And a few, some months ago, when the property was cleaned out, they took out all the junk from the previous neighbor, I mean, for the pre, yeah, my neighbor. Everything blew into my yard and that is my concern when the siding comes off, when the painters are out there painting any of the existing woodwork on the property. Um, because just, it just caked my backyard. And my other concern too is because there are kids on either side, on either side of my property and, you know, for them having to breathe all that stuff. Um, and that's pretty much it.
Oh, thank you.
I'm Brendan Anderson at six, three, nine Meadow Suite as well. Um, I just want to say Kurt has been very proactive and very reactive and responsive, so we appreciate that. Um, mine's a little bit more along Sarah's lines um, for construction or in demolition, specifically the abatement. I know there's probably strict standards and everything that they'll follow and California does have a lot of regulations. Um, they're kind of, you know, it's up to the contractor and how to apply those and everything. But due to the, you know, the close proximity of neighbors and sensitive receptors uh, directly downwind, I'm just a little concerned. Um, I don't want to increase construction costs or demolition or anything, but without a containment, um, you know, I don't know. There's wet methods and stuff. I'm just a little concerned. Um, so I'd like that to be kind of considered as part of this, so.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else in the room want to speak up? Seeing none, we'll ask Tracy if she's got anybody online.
Nobody's raising their hands online, Trish.
Okay. All right, then we've had uh, five comments here in the room. And um, we will then close the public comment section and bring it back up here for discussion. So historically, I was in the council chambers when that initial abatement process took place with Mayor First and all of those people trying to get clean that property up. That was a long time ago. Um, it's been a problem property and I commend you for taking this on. You make it sound like you accidentally got into this house, so whoops, I've got what I wished for. So everybody in the neighborhood would like to see it revamped. So I'm going to sort of charge ahead here before opening it up to the other ones and say that as a commissioner and as a town, I think that everybody wants you to succeed with this, right? Get this property rehabbed. But there are issues, so, and I think we've all got things to say about those issues, what's there? Um, and um, not the least of which are the abatement issues, the construction of that house, all kinds of things. But I think our, I'm going to advocate for getting new submissions with correct plans and story poles up. So I think that's a necessity for this. Um, but we'll have to ask the commissioners here to weigh in on what uh, we'd like to see for another set of plans and story poles up there. So um, you know, uh, this gentleman has undertaken this um, almost as an adventure. Um, so we want to support him in that. So I'm going to start with you, Daniel, and see what you have to say about this, your feelings about the project and what you would like to see happen next.
Thank you. Uh, well, I, I guess I would um, second your comments relative to um, how much this property needs to be brought back uh, to the habitable condition. Uh, the uh, removal of the non-conforming setbacks, I think is, is a real plus. Um, removal of the asbestos and assuming it's done in accordance to California law, which I do believe is fairly um, uh, restrictive in terms of what it requires. Um, I think that um, more can be done to reduce the height. Um, uh, I, I think that the um, uh, the gable that you've added over the bathroom actually improves the design. Um, and um, uh, it looked to me like, like, might be able to get this down by three feet, ten inches. Uh, one thing you could consider, particularly since you made a reference to New England, one thing they do a lot in New England is um, if you were to take the exterior wall of the master bedroom uh, only to seven feet, uh, and then the roof would be sloping, uh, and then that, you know, a footer, footer. And then, you know, a footer, foot and a half inside, you can go back up to eight feet or nine feet or ten feet. It's a pretty common thing, and we could gain another foot there. And I think you mentioned if if we stuck with a eight foot ceiling plus three inches for the floor and the in the kitchen and dining room, plus the you know, I think it was three foot, one inch. You said you gained a foot. You could gain a foot because the slope was not accurate to begin with, if I interpreted you correctly. Anyway, I guess what I'm saying is that, agreeing with you, Peter, that I think coming back to us with with a revised alternative that does as much as possible to reduce the height of that master bedroom suite. I think that's all for now.
Okay, we'll come back to you then. Over on the far left there, Margaret. What are your thoughts here?
I'm I also commend you for being a positive force in the neighborhood and trying to bring all the neighbors in with comments and accommodating them. Cleaning it up is a massive project. Is a massive project and I'm sure a very expensive one, and I have a feeling it will continue to be expensive. I think it's also commendable that you've sort of reflected the style of the neighborhood. And because many projects that we see don't. And and it's probably very hard. I have now. And I've always had a concern for neighbors and the views that neighbors may have and may lose. And things do change, but there are some views here that show a particularly looming wall. And that's kind of hard to get up or get outside and see just a wall. Even though the houses are close together, I think that needs to be addressed, this idea that it's looming in front of six thirty three meadow suite is a very, that's that's tough to swallow. I'm not sure about the problem with the view from Mount Tam. From the photograph, it looks like just a little sliver is off, and actually, it looks like foliage is blocking most of Mount Tam from the picture that was taken. And I wasn't able to get into the back of the site, so I didn't see it firsthand, but that doesn't bother me as much as this kind of looming wall that someone might have to look at. I think that some alternatives that have you that you've proposed or might be proposed by one of the neighbors need to be considered. I'd have a hard time making the findings at this point. Again, I do really, I sympathize with you and I I'd like you to stay in the neighborhood. I hope you can live here.
Thank you. Okay. That's a good start. Mr. Rizzo.
Of course, I have similar thoughts. I mean, you did get yourself in a big project here. When I walk through, I think my biggest concern is I know that you really want to put that addition in the back because you feel like it might be the cheapest solution, but, you know, looking at all the other work around the house, is is there a better way to design it? That could cost you the same amount of money, because I don't really see a lot. Could this thing go over the living room? Could it be set back a tiny bit from the neighbor to, I think there's also an option to lower this, lower the walls, the ceiling heights. There's, there's a ton of options. From what I can tell, if we went to eight foot wall heights and went to the five twelve roof, you can almost bring that down four and a half, five feet, which if you did want to come back with a presentation and that would significantly lower it, but it's still, one of the things that's kind of, I'm having a hard time with the findings is is when I'm sitting in the backyard to the what, to the west, and I do see that big, big wall. That's a big looming wall. I don't know if you can correct that by lowering the ceiling, the roof. But definitely techniques that you did with changing the roof line really helped out. I would even go as far as saying that if you did a hip roof over the bathroom, that would help out the neighbor behind you a lot more, because that's another four feet. But I see there's a there's even an option of maybe lowering the living room to level the garage, so the whole, it's just a two-story building, and then you're down really down, and then that addition can go over the living room and out of the backyards. So if there wasn't so much work done, I wouldn't make these suggestions, but I think that there's, since there's so much work going on, there's all the brand new bathrooms. It doesn't seem like it'd be a significant impact to your budget if you were to do something like that, in my opinion, but I think you need to come back with a new design. What I think. Whether you come back with the roof lines down and you want to keep it in the back and set it back a little bit from the neighbor to, I I still think it needs to be set back a little bit from the neighbor to the west. It might make the master bedroom a little smaller, but we still have to make sure the community, it fits in with a little bit with the community here. So I see that there's three, you know, there's three directions, either come back with the same design with the roof, with different roof lines, maybe possibly lowering the the living room and moving the addition to the front, or come back with a new house, and I think Mark that lives behind you had come up with it. It was a really, really good suggestion, you know, if you did do a new build, you know, the value would be a lot more. Probably cost you the same amount of money, from what I see. But I don't exactly know what you're going to keep. So
Hang on a sec. We'll let, we'll let you say a lot here in a moment.
We'll let you come back with it. But yeah, I see that there's three, you know, kind of three actions that that maybe the applicant can take, which is modifying what he has with the new roof line, coming back with that, possibly moving the addition and keeping it as a remodel closer to the front of the property, or come back with a completely new proposal with a new house.
All right, okay. I'm going to agree with that. And I think that having witnessed a lot of architects' work, and Jim is an architect, you know, you're an architect, take the blocks, move the spaces around.
I'm not licensed, so I just want to make that clear, so I don't get in trouble.
They move the blocks around, they figure out what works. And at a very basic level, I think Jim's right, that doing that with this project might help you come up with a even better aesthetic for the neighborhood. Dropping that roof significantly is an issue that has to be accomplished, in my mind. Get it comparable to the other buildings on the block. And I think with his thoughts about dropping things, you could create the square footage you need, still get it the same size building, but a lower building overall. But that's, you're the guy who has the option to come back to us with what you want to bring back. And maybe to Jim's point, your ideas, I'm just going to take the alternative design, get the roof lines back or corrected, get new story polls up, come back to us. You have those options. I think that Daniel's point about clipping the walls inside that upper story and having the whole roof dropped down with a lower plate height, that was going to be my suggestion as well, to do that, that helps drop that roof considerably. I think the neighbors to the west, it's too big of a wall. It blocks too much, just the street elevations of those homes as it's too high, as it is in the application. We see lots of homes get second stories put on them, and we're very careful about what that looks like when it's put on top. And in this case, I think it goes way too high with what you've got going. It's about how it fits into the block, the house style. My other comments, Jim's point is about a redesign. Did you consider a complete redesign of this? You're kind of working with what's there. And I think a whole shifting of those program elements might be a good thought process. Sit down, work it out. Maybe you come to the same result, and then you can justify what you've got a little better. Done a fair amount of asbestos abatement. It's pretty rigid. You become a hazardous waste generator to the state, and that goes off in a very rigid format. So the neighbors should rest assured that if it's done correctly, it's contained. It'll be, it won't be flying around. Code enforcement will keep you compliant with infringements on the other properties. That's a necessity. I think everybody respects the neighbors, and they have to do that in the town. That'll be a part of the building permit process, but neighbors are clearly voicing that now because they're aware of the history of the property and how much it impacts the neighborhood. I think that this takes significant resources to undertake this project. And got a plan for that. And to Jim's point, I think a rebuild is the better option. That's my opinion. Having rehabbed any number of buildings, take it down, start over. You'll save money. That's my opinion, and a lot of years in this business. So that's my thought about it. I think that what we're saying to you essentially is you've got to come back to us with a revised plan. Staff can speak to how to do that, whether it's come back with a date certain or come back with a whole new. You figure it out. Tell them when you want to do it, because you've got to get story polls up for the process that they govern, and they'll tell you, but you have that option to pick a date in the future. You could say December first. But that's, that's what you can do. So now I've spoken a lot. You get to respond, because I think we and the staff would like to hear what your thoughts are, the neighbors, too.
Yeah, so firstly, thank you for the feedback. I've kind of been designing this in a bubble. And you know how hard that can be. So the, I'll kind of restate this. The reason why I didn't tear down the house, and I knew that it was going to be more trouble and more expensive, is because I would my assumption, and that could be wrong, is that the neighbors wouldn't have wanted me to. They would have wanted me to keep the old house to keep, maintain the character of the street. And so like, I'm what worries me about that option is if I come back with that design, someone's going to say, I don't want you to tear it down. So I'm just not saying that that's going to happen, but that's just kind of like the that's what worries me about going down that path. I am also open to dropping the roof heights lower. Like, that was one thing that I just sort of came across today as I was like, you know, exploring the new roof pitch and stuff like that, like vault the ceiling over the bedroom, because it wasn't vaulted before, because it was already so high. And it would actually double the square footage of the bedroom and the, and the far calculations. That I'm, I'm willing to do that, but I, and I kind of want to express, express this, because I've, I've talked to Anna and Dan about this, that like the, the windowsills on that side are high enough, and I'm willing to go even higher. Right now, they're four, six. Could easily go up to like five foot to not be looking in their backyard. And so like the I am addressing the privacy, privacy concerns, even like considering that right now, like I can look right in, like, it took me three site visits in order to take a picture of their backyard, because I couldn't get a photo without them in it and present it without their consent.
All right, Kurt, I'm going to say that this is all dialogue that you can undertake with them and so forth, so.
Okay.
I think that we got to take a motion here, do we not, on what to do? Yeah. So we'll, we'll summarize that, but my, my last bit of advice and recommendation, this is sort of off the program here, but get a tester over there. Pay the money to get somebody, a remediation contractor, to do air testing and surface testing on, you know, they're going to, they're going to stick probes into the studs, they're going to test the floor materials. They're going to tell you how bad the mold is and how rampant it is, and you need to have somebody tell you what has to get replaced. And that's going to guide your reconstruction efforts, I think significantly.
Okay.
Get an asbestos contractor over there to look at that, give you some better ideas. But first, get the air tester and the other testers over there. They will point to stuff and tell you what you got to get out of it. And the town can't govern that, but that's going to be your responsibility to yourself and to the project to do that. If you have a demo contractor come in there, he's going to say, I can't touch that because it's asbestos. So come up with a demo plan, get the testing people over there, figure out how much there is, find out what's wrong. In the meantime, work on your plan, get it revised, decide what to do with a new plan, and then come back to staff with something. That's what that's out over my skis a little bit here, but, you know.
I, I appreciate the guidance.
Yeah, can I make a motion to continue the matter to a future date for future hearings, if the applicant wants to do that?
Yes. That's what you would like to do, we presume, is to continue this to a date uncertain.
Yes.
Right.
Second, that's my motion.
Second.
We'll call on that.
Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And Chair Chase?
Yes. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing to the applicant? The advice that Peter Chase gives is the best advice you'll ever get. As far as experience and practicality, and for as long as I've known him, he's never steered anyone wrong.
Thank you for saying that. The site meetings with both of you yesterday were incredibly helpful, so thank you.
And Chair Chase, just for the record, we have a due need to read the appeal statement.
Oh, yes.
Because your decision could be appealed, and no, can't be appealed?
All right, then. All right, so neighbors. Thank you. Your word. And is everybody okay to continue on to the next item, or do you need to take a break quickly?
Let's take a break.
Okay, we'll take a break, and we'll be back here at nine oh three.
Recording stopped.
Hi, in case you missed us, we're back. But here we are. We have We have a second hearing tonight. This is for Two South Way. This is a design review application and variance application. Three variances, as I recall, for a new 3,600 square foot residence at Two South Way. And Tracy, you're left at the table. Bill, we can't talk to you anymore.
Good evening.
Chair Chase, commissioners. As Peter said, we are conducting a public hearing for design review application to allow the demolition of the existing residence and construction of a new 3,256 square foot residence and attached 400 square foot garage at Two South Way. The applicants are also requesting variance approval to allow the proposed residence to encroach into the front and rear yard setbacks and for the entry stairs to extend into the required street side yard setback. The project site, Two South Way, is situated at the intersection of South Way and Sausalito Street in a neighborhood commonly known as Hidden Valley. Adjacent to the project site to the east is a one single family home, 10 South Way. The residence at 10 South Way is also owned by the project applicant. Additional single family homes are located to the north across Sausalito Street and to the, to the west across, excuse me, to the north across South Way. It's hard to say, north across South Way and to the west across Sausalito Street, excuse me. Located, located to the south of the project site is Marin County Open Space, the Alto Bowl Preserve in Mill Valley. These photos are showing the existing conditions at the project site. The project site is a corner lot pursuant to Corte Madera Municipal Code. A corner lot has set, the definition of corner lot sets forth which property line is the front. For a corner lot, the shortest property line abutting a street is the front property line. So in the case of the project site, that means the front property line is Sausalito Street and South Way is therefore the street side yard property line. The existing lot is developed with a 3,147 square foot, three-story residence, including an attached garage and carport. This slide shows several photos of existing conditions and additional photos are in the plan set on sheet AS 1.04. The structure is in poor condition and the applicant proposes to demolish it as part of the project. Parcel is zoned R1A low-density residential. This slide shows existing proposed and required development standards. The existing residence is non-conforming with respect to the front and rear yard setbacks. Both the existing and proposed residence encroach into the required front and rear yard setbacks shown on rows two and three of the table. The applicant proposes to construct a 3,656 square foot, three-story residence inclusive of the attached garage. The design of the residence is contemporary. The proposed materials include a light stained vertical wood siding, a warm stone cladding, black standing seam metal roofing, bronze window trim and fascia. And very recently, the applicant has opted to use a material called thermory for the proposed decking rather than the EPE that's shown on plan. Thermory is a treated wood that is more sustainable than the EPE and the applicant is, tonight has brought in a sample, that's the detached wood sample. That is the material for the decking. Decks will utilize the glass, tempered glass railing where required. And sheet AA 9.02 and 9.03 show renderings and also the proposed materials. The proposed residence includes a basement and pursuant to the zoning ordinance, the proposed basement does not count towards gross floor area since it's almost entirely subterranean. The basement floor plan's on the left and a section showing the subterranean nature of this level is on the right. Level one of the proposed residence includes two bedrooms and two bathrooms. With an office laundry and media room. The attached two-car garage is positioned at the west end of this level of the home. Ceiling level of, ceiling height of level one is nine feet, 10 inches, except for the garage, which is 13 feet, seven inches. The wood deck, as I said before, is proposed off of the lower, the lower floor, off the south elevation, providing access to the yard and a hot tub. The deck is a maximum of three feet in height measured from grade to the surface level of the deck. Slide is showing level two floor plan, which is sheet AA 1.02 of your plans. Level two includes the primary bedroom suite. It also includes a powder room, kitchen, dining room and living room. An entry foyer is also proposed on this level with the front entry door facing to the north towards South Way. A landing and exterior stairs are proposed to provide pedestrian access from South Way into the front entry. Additionally, a raised deck is proposed off the south elevation facing open space. It is 444 square feet and it's uncovered. Sparrow staircase is positioned at the west end of the deck. It will provide access from the upper level deck to the lower level deck and the yard. Ceiling height of level two ranges from 10 feet to 13 feet, four inches. And lastly, an elevator will provide access to all the levels. Moving on to the elevations, this is the south elevation facing the Alto Bowl Preserve. The residence was designed to direct views south towards the open space. Extensive windows and doors are proposed on the south elevation, maximizing views in this direction. Off the south elevation, a deck at the lower level is proposed, like I talked about before, as well as a raised deck on the second level, providing an outdoor entertaining space for future occupants of the home. Height of the south elevation varies from 21 feet, seven inches to a maximum of 28 feet, six inches at the highest point of the shed roof at the center of the home. Code maximum is 30 feet. The height of the existing home is 30 feet at its highest point. This is showing the west elevation. It just faces Sausalito Street. It has a maximum height of 28 feet, six inches. And this height is measured from grade, finished grade, to the highest point of the shed roof at the center of the structure. Almost 25 feet, seven inches, measured from grade to the flat roof that's in the foreground above the garage. And windows of varying shape and size are proposed on this elevation. Garage door opening is visible on this facade. This is the east elevation. It faces a neighboring property at 10 South Way. Three floor-to-ceiling windows are proposed on the second level of the building and at the lower level, six windows are proposed of varying shapes and sizes. East elevation varies in height as the lot slopes downhill from north to south with a maximum height of 21 feet, five inches. And this height is for the flat roof portion in the, the building in the foreground of this elevation. And the north elevation faces South Way, varies in height since the lot slopes from, down from east to west when viewed in this direction. The north elevation has a maximum height of 24 feet, eight inches. And the north elevation includes the residence's primary entry door at the second level and extensive windows that vary in shape and size. This elevation also includes exterior entry stairs providing access from South Way to the entry door. The applicant has provided a landscape and vegetation management plan as part of their smittle. They propose to remove the existing overgrown vegetation from the site. All trees are proposed to remain except for three eight-inch lemon trees. The lemon trees are positioned in the footprint of the new building, which is why they're proposed to be removed. Proposed landscaping consists of numerous grasses, flowering shrubs and hedges, several trees and a large drought tolerant lawn area, water-efficient lawn area, I should say. Potocarpus evergreen shrubs are proposed along kind of the southwest corner of the site as privacy screening. One dogwood tree is proposed at the base of the spiral staircase and four olive trees are proposed along the north elevation. Landscape planters are proposed at the lower level deck at the south and west corners, at the northwest corner of the building and along the north elevation and will be planted with various flowering shrubs and grasses. The fire department conducted a review of the landscape and vegetation management plan. The fire code official determined that the plant choice is consistent with WUI standards. Combustible mulch will not be allowed. Spacing on the potocarpus around the south and west property lines will most likely need to be changed and reduced due to plant spacing requirements. The fire department stated that they will likely, the applicant will likely need to remove every other potocarpus along the hedgerow from the plan. The landscape and vegetation management plan will be a part of the building permits in middle and staff would make sure that it's consistent with the design review approval and the fire department would make sure it's consistent with WUI standards. Site improvements are included. One and a half to three-foot tall retaining walls are proposed to level the yard area and the driveway area. The walls are proposed to be built on the perimeter also of the southern and western property line and then just to the north and south of the driveway. The new driveway was reviewed by the public works in the fire department. It's the white space positioned at the western property line, just south of the corner. Lastly, an approximately 150 square foot buyer retention area is included as part of the site improvements. That's positioned along the south property line of the site and it's to filter stormwater, collect, retain and then filter any stormwater before it's conveyed off-site. Three variances, as Peter said, are being requested for the project. These include a, a front setback variance on the west side along Sausalito Street to allow a 16-foot, 10-inch setback where 25 is required. A rear yard setback variance, that's the east side adjacent to 10 South Way, to allow an eight-foot setback, required setback for this elevation is 35 feet. And then, as I stated before, a street side yard setback variance along South Way to allow the raised exterior stairs to extend 10 feet into the required setback. Our code allows stairs to extend up to three feet into a required street side or side yard setback and up to six feet in the front or rear setback. The walls, however, of that facade, they, they do meet the street side yard setback requirement. Primarily variance findings require that one can affirm that there is a unique condition or special circumstances that apply to the lot. That means that strict application of the zoning ordinance creates, results in a difficulty at the site. The unique circumstances that apply to this lot are that the lot is a corner lot and it's a wedge-shaped lot and it's undersized for the zoning district, which has larger setback requirements. Analysis of staff's variance findings are found in attachment one to your staff report, the resolution. They begin on about page six. This slide is showing the proposed site plan. And the subject lot's front property line, as I stated, it butts Sausalito Street and the rear is the east, which butts 10 South Way. Combined with the wedge shape of the lot, this creates a buildable area shaped like a triangle. That's the buildable area of the lot is shown in that dashed red triangle, triangular shape on the slide. And it's, it's infeasible to construct a building that fits into this acute triangle. Areas of encroachment are the hatched areas near the garage and also the west, the, excuse me, the, at the west side of the home and also the, the east side of the home adjacent to 10 South Way. And the table on this slide is showing the applicant's proposed setbacks next to the right-hand column, which is the required setbacks. The existing home at Two South Way was built in 1968. And for the commission's information, the existing residence is similarly non-conforming with respect to front and rear yard setbacks. This table is showing you the existing building setbacks next to, again, the required setbacks on the right-hand column. So as stated, the lot is a corner lot in a non-uniform unusual wedge shape. Total lot area is just over 9,300 square feet, which is undersized for R1A zoning. R1A zoning minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. And this means that the subject lot is 46% of what's required for that zoning district. The, this constrains the buildable area of the lot. It's about 1,400 square feet of area inside of that triangle, which computes to about 15% of the lot size once the area within setbacks is subtracted. I just wanted to add that at the bottom of the slide, setback standards for R1 are, are less than those of an R1A lot. And as I stated, the size of this lot is more comparable to an R1-sized lot. And that's what that table's showing at the bottom, what setbacks would be if this was an R1 lot. Staff is recommending approval of the design review and the variance. The analysis of the design review findings and variance findings is in your resolution, which is attachment one to the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have tonight.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
All right then, so we'll start with commissioners to see if they have any questions for you before we hear a presentation. Daniel, do you have any questions?
No questions, okay.
Okay. Over to you, Margaret.
I don't see any questions.
Uh-oh, okay, Jim.
Tracy, is there any other criteria to determine the front yard setbacks other than the length of the property line?
On a, on a corner lot?
Is the address is on, on Two South Way? Is there any other criteria besides just the length that determines the?
It reads something like, on a, for a corner lot, the front property line is the shortest property line abutting a street. So you just look at what are the length of these two property lines? And therefore, the shortest one is the front. If they were equal, then that would be a decision made by the zoning administrator, which one is the front. In this case, there's about 30 feet difference between Sausalito Street frontage and South Way frontage.
Fairly small compared to the length of them, I would imagine, percentage-wise?
Yes.
But you know, just looking at the, the zoning in this area, it almost seems like it was zoned something else at some time because the lots, you look at, a lot of the lots were merged on the parcel map. It almost seems like the development, houses were built and then they overlaid a 20,000-square-foot criteria on top of it, but is there any other zoning history in this area, why it was zoned for 20,000 square, 20,000 square foot lots? When it looks like most of them are undersized?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know that R1A generally is typically in our hillside neighborhoods. They're typically irregularly shaped lots and mostly large lots. And you do see from time to time smaller lots and even residences built over the property line, the neighboring property at 10 South Way has a property line going through the middle of it. So I think it's, lots of uniqueness, I think, in Corte Madera generally and in R1A. The irregular shapes, I think, are, we're seeing that, but typically it's, it's larger, larger lots.
And, and what's the significance of the overlay district? There's an overlay district on top of the?
It mostly relates to subdivisions and
Okay.
in the hillside land capacity overlay. Pre-Senate Bill Number Nine, most people could not subdivide their lots because there's a capacity for units and it calks to zero and says, of course, as a footnote, that we can't. That would constitute taking if it was calc to zero, units allowed on a lot. So you can at least have one. So now we are seeing subdivisions in R1A, almost all of our SB9 subdivisions are now, are, are R1A lots because they can now take advantage of subdividing. That's mostly what the overlays is telling us.
Thank you.
That's interesting, Jim. Didn't know that. Didn't know that. Tracy, just for informational purposes, the 10 Southway property abutting there, the setback on that property length of that property is, what, is that 10 feet?
That's, we've treated that as the rear property line. It's zoned R1B. I think the rear setback is 100 feet for R1B. I can look if we need to know that, but that's, we've treated that as a rear yard, and the property itself, when it was built, was built under a precise plan for some reason. So if you try to look back in the history, you can't find them saying what the setbacks are. It was all a discussion of what's the best siding for the new home on the lot versus actually calling out what the setbacks are. When, in the recent past, they built an ADU. And that's, if you look at the site, that's the rear yard. There's a swimming pool, a large lawn, and sports area. And so they do have an ADU that's about six feet from the property line along open space and along the southern property line of 2 Southway is an ADU.
Okay. Wild, wild west. Okay. I don't have any other questions. So we can now turn to the applicant and get a presentation. Who's gonna stand up? No, you go. No, you go. No, you go.
All right. Hello, commissioners and chairman. My name is Phoebe Holsher, and I am the architect for the Weavers for Cindy and Graham. So, first of all, I want to start with a big thank you to the planning department of Corte Madera. This project has been a long process to get here tonight. We started in 2022, started our design. We've met with Tracy many times, and Tracy and Martha a couple times. My records show that we first came in and spoke with Tracy in actually November of 2022, and she gave us some good feedback, and we kind of went back to the drawing board. We worked at breaking up the massing of the house and reducing the volume, and not attempting, not using the height limit as the suggested maximum to fill the, to fill the volume. So we really listened to her. We met with the planners again three times in 2023. And Tracy, you know, throughout the process, encouraged and emphasized the importance of meeting with neighbors. So when we felt like we finally had a project and a design that met the needs of our clients and as well met the suggestions of the planning department, we then went to the neighbors and went through some very thorough reviews with them. Tracy, can you put the next slide on, please? So I think this is in the packet that you guys reviewed, but just to show it again, because we, you know, because this is a very important part of the project, is the neighbor support. We have four neighbor locations and addresses here, and they're highlighted in different colors. And these are the adjacent neighbors that we reviewed, and they, there's unanimous support from them. Tracy, next, please. Now, I know you guys have the letters. A couple came in late. I would like to highlight a few of the quotes from Patrick at 437 Sausalito. "I think it will be a great addition to our neighborhood." From Casey and Jennifer at 444 Sausalito, after they reviewed the story polls, "The owners and architect carefully considered the impact of the proposed design on the neighborhood and environment to help make Corte Madera both safer and more beautiful." Tiffany at 445 Sausalito says, "Thank you for being such wonderful neighbors. I fully endorse your plans to build such a beautiful new house." And then Ken at 440 Sausalito wrote, "Cindy's plan is exceptional with focus on the surroundings and consideration of the community. I really like the architecture and appreciate the improvement to the neighborhood." And his wife Julie, after reviewing the story polls, added, "I am delighted you are transforming this 2 Southway property into a beautiful home. I appreciate the transparency throughout your planning, design, and development process. I have viewed the design plans and the story polls in place and approve of this design plan." Okay, next. Okay, all right. So on to the neighborhood context. These are photos of the neighbors' homes. The three at the top row are, in fact, the neighbors that wrote the letters of support, various adjacent properties. What we wanted to do here is to show that as far as fitting into the neighborhood, there is a variety of styles, there's a variety of colors. There's a couple white homes, some gray wood, traditional, modern. It's a little bit of everything. Next. So then we also were curious, because it borders open space, we wanted to see the impact and privacy from both directions of the subject property with regard to the alto bowl open space. So you can see the red dot, which is at the fire road where the trail crosses it, and you can see the photograph up on the upper right, and you can barely see the house. The most exposed view is from the green dot, which is the middle photograph on the right, and that's from the trails that crosses the fire road. And you can still kind of barely see it. There's a lot of foliage here, and there's a lot of screening. And then finally, the, the blue dot, and you really, I can't really see it at all. So we thought that that was kind of an interesting exercise in, in the level of exposure from the trail and further down on the fire road. Okay, next, please. So then we move to the subject property, and the top rows of the foliage, and these are all trees that we plan to keep. The upper left is really a focal point for the entry, for the entry stairs. As you guys saw when you went to the site, the front entry is from Southway. We embraced that, and at the time, we actually thought that was the front property line, but we, for various reasons, chose to put the front door there as well. And that tree is kind of right in front of the house, so we used it as the focal point, and we wanted to, that's why we have a curved staircase that comes up from the road to work around the canopy of the tree. We think that that's going to be a really beautiful way to enter the house. The next set of slides, the trees are along the east property line. The palm trees in the back are staying, and then the maple at the southeast end of the property is the far right. The bottom two left slides show the state of the existing home, which is pretty bad. And the bottom right two slides also show the existing home. But what I also think is interesting here is the story poles are up there, and you can see that the story poles really do encase the existing house. We, we basically kept the new house centrally located kind of in accordance with where the existing house is. Okay, next. So I don't think I need to talk about these slides because Tracy thoroughly explained the variances in the setbacks. So I think we can go ahead and move on to the next slide. So we had a little bit of communication concerning, one of the commissioners asked about if Southway were the front, and this is something that we had done in the very beginning of the project because we were mistaken and thought it was the front. So we have two additional lines for you to review tonight. The blue line is the zoning if Southway were the front with the present R1A zoning, which of course, we know the lot is substandard to that size. The pink dashed line shows if it were the R1 zoning, which is more consistent with the actual size of the lot. And as you can see with that envelope, the house actually fits in it, and we wouldn't have to ask for variances other than the stairs, the entry stairs. So we thought that was, that was interesting, kind of taking a look at that. Okay, next, please. Okay, that's the landscape plan. And again, I think Tracy covered it really thoroughly. I think the only thing to add is really just, again, the front entry. And you can see all the foliage along the perimeter, which is all the trees that we plan to keep. And again, we're doing deer-resistant trees also in the front yard off Southway, where we don't have a fence in between the property line and the house. That's kind of a friendly, open entry. And again, the deer fencing around the back to create privacy as well as keeping the deer out. Next. So this again shows the front entry to the house, and the, you know, the tree that we've been talking about as the focal point. What I also want to point out here is the massing and how we approached the massing. We have, the perimeter of the house has the 10-foot flat ceiling, and it's only in the middle space where we kind of lift that up, and we lift it up toward the back of the property, toward the sun, the south, toward the open space, toward the views. Next.
Phoebe, before you go on, it was, was that the brown line the grade of the street?
That is the street, yes.
Thank you.
And again, from the back, we superimposed photographs of the neighborhood, so this is fairly accurate. And again, you can see the lower sides, the flat roofs, and then again, the central volume, which is the dining room and living room, is the part that lifts up toward, again, the light and the view. Next. And then this one is the elevation that faces Sausalito. Again, the the shed roof volume is further back. In the foreground is the kitchen with the flat roof, and the sloped shed roof of the living room. What we did is we fit small clerestory windows over the entry. We started the shed roof at that point and then created a shallow slope up toward the rear of the lot. We also show the hedging, which sounds like it will need to be a little bit more sparse than what we show it as, but that's to create a green screen for the road as well as privacy for the property. Next. Again, the material board, Tracy already reviewed that. And so I don't think I need to go over that again unless you guys have questions. Next. And this is the final slide. And again, we just want to reiterate that this is a product of extensive work with the planners and the clients and the support of the neighbors, the unanimous support of the neighbors nearby. And we hope we've arrived at a home that is a positive addition to the neighborhood as well as the home that meets the needs of our clients and their children. And we really thank you guys for your consideration and your time tonight.
Okay, Phoebe, stay right there for a second.
Okay.
So someone else is going to continue. Okay, good. Then we'll, we'll come back to you with questions if anybody has. As a group, we'll address that, but go on with your presentation.
Well, thank you so much to the commission and the chairman for listening to our proposal. I have two of my kids here, Chase and Lily, and my wife and other son are at my son's college orientation. So that's why we don't have the full team here. But we, we currently live at 10 Southway. We've lived, which is just right above this house, basically. And we've lived there for 16 years. So we basically raised our family there. It's been, it's been an amazing neighborhood. We've, you know, our kids, our kids were zero, two, and four when we moved in, so they've been, basically spent their entire childhood there, and we, and we really love the neighborhood. We, when our neighbors at 2 Southway were preparing to, to leave and put the house on the market, we approached them to buy it, and we really had two goals in mind. One is we wanted to build something there that would be a really positive addition to the neighborhood because it's a really amazing lot on the corner there, you know, right at the butt of the trailhead. So we wanted to make sure that whatever got built there was something that would add a lot to the neighborhood. And I think, you know, hopefully, you, you agree that the design is, is going to do that. Second reason that we bought it is that we thought maybe that someday our kids could move back, and, you know, we could have grandkids and everything there. If you've ever had kids that have moved away, maybe you have that same feeling. So that was, that was really the other reason. As Phoebe said, you know, this has been a very collaborative process with both the, the Corte Madera commission and, and also with our neighbors. So we've gotten their input along the way, and also hopefully worked closely with you to make sure that it's something that, that kind of meets the needs of everybody. And, and as Phoebe said, I think we've been working on this for just about two years. Yeah, to bring, to get to this point. So we're, we're really grateful for your consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yeah.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicants? Margaret, do you have any questions about the plans?
Just. Is it, is it your intention to just keep the house in the family? Or are you intending to sell it? Oh, yeah. Well, a couple. It was my impression when I was up and around there remembering what the fire department said about exiting that area if there were to be a problem because the fire trucks coming up the hill would, would sort of meet the people trying to escape. And so I'd appreciate it if you'd tell us what kind of fire safety things are being built into that house.
Yeah, of course. I do have that written down, so give me a sec here while I find it.
Would you step up to the mic? Yeah, please. Well, go ahead, get up to the mic, yeah.
There's a, there's a, there's a fire road, you may know, that's right at the, the base of that trailhead that has a locked gate there. And at one point, there were keys that were given out to the neighbors so that in case there was a fire, that we could go out that way, which would help. Not, I know we have to answer the question about the house, but just for evacuation, to have another point of evacuation. But I don't know what happened to that, those keys. So maybe that's a topic for me, probably another, another day, but.
Tracy will take notes and?
Okay, all right, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
Those roads are the ingress for the fire engines. They, they come in the dangerous fire road, and they send the people out on foot or in their cars on the paved road. I did talk, just relevant to this discussion, is I did talk to the fire inspector and asked him about fire turnaround because the dead ends there, and he said they would utilize Southway to turn around an engine there if they had a call at the end of the road.
So for the materials of the house, the wood siding is WUII compliant. It is also, I just looked at a quote from the company, and it says it offers a sustainable, environmentally friendly, carbon-neutral solution. So it's, you know, sustainable as well, but it is treated with a fire retardant. And we use this in a lot of our houses right now because we've got a lot of projects in the WUII zone. So it's, it's a really good material that is as fire resistant as, as that kind of material can be.
And I'm assuming you have other? No, I'm not assuming anything. No, I'm not assuming anything.
The, I just want to add, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but just wanted to refer you to page 13 of the REZO has central wind fire conditions of approval, which might help answer some of those questions you're wondering about. What would they require of this residence? Fire sprinklers, for instance, and vegetative vegetation management.
Glad to hear that the fire department was approving the vegetation.
Yeah, let me add too. I can't remember if this was already stated or not, but the plants that we chose are non pyrophytic. So they are drought tolerant, some native and non pyrophytic.
And is there, I, I didn't notice anything because everything was so dry. Is there any drainage problem down from the upper site to the lower site?
No, nothing that I've been aware of, no. And we are adding, you know, proper drainage for all of it, for the whole site.
Now I don't have anything else.
Okay. Thank you.
Reserve the right to come back.
All right. Did I ask you, Daniel? No, okay.
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Weaver. When you bought this property, did you realize it was infeasible to build unless you got variances?
We looked at the existing footprint and probably mistakenly thought that we would build something in that same footprint. I'm not an architect, so the answer is I probably didn't do a great job of really planning that out. I thought that if we could build in that same footprint that we would be okay, but I, I didn't do the next level of really looking at all the variances.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question for Phoebe. Can you talk about the sustainability features? You talked about the landscape. You talked about the sustainable wood. Can you talk about other features, solar panels?
Yeah.
Electrical MEP?
Yes. So we are definitely installing solar panels. The wall and roof assemblies will be energy efficient, which, you know, is kind of to me in keeping with sustainability. We will add lighting that is dark sky compliant, and that's kind of a given. And that's energy efficient lighting as well. And then again, the, the materials are sustainable. What we use, the reason why we switched from EPE to the Thermery, the Thermery is considered a sustainable product, whereas EPE really isn't. And so we wanted to make that, that change. It's going to be insulated per code or greater. The electrical will be per the California code as well. So, you know, all in all, it will be as energy efficient and using as, as much sustainable materials as we can.
Will the energy be carbon neutral?
I don't know. I don't know.
And a lot of glass, south-facing glass. Is the glass, any special kind of glass to reduce heat gain?
Yes, and I wish I knew exactly what it was. It's low, it's double pane, of course, and it's low E. I think it's a, oh, boy, what is it? 360. It is, it is the higher energy efficient glazing. And again, we've, we've used that before, and I apologize. I don't know the specific name of it. Something, Argon something. I'm sorry. Should have done my homework on that. Sorry.
Don't have any other questions.
All right, thank you.
I had a loss for words. You're not going to hear that very much. I am interested in this product, though, and this is a fire resistant. It's part of the state. We approve products. Dark ash. It's really beautiful.
And that's one half of the professional question. The other is where's the stone from?
The stone?
Yeah.
I, I think that is from a Texas quarry. And it's a split face. And I can't remember if it's an actual limestone or what. I can't, I can't remember exactly what it is.
Thank you. Just. So Jeff, where do we stand with gray water these days? Gray water systems? See it in the conditions? Or is it in there? Oh, here it is. Yeah. We don't need a water service, so that's, we're fine. Okay.
Found it.
Yeah. Okay. And I saw all that glass and I thought you guys have probably run a compliance program to make sure that it all works. Percentage of glass, type of glass.
Yes.
Lots of glass.
Base, yeah.
Okay. Okay. No more questions then. We better check online to see if there's somebody online. Oh, okay. Go ahead, Margaret.
Do you foresee any issues in, in the tear down process?
It's, it's so dry up there. I'm just wondering, you know, the tear down and the carryaway.
Sure. No, I really don't. The the demolition teams are so efficient these days. It is shocking how quickly demolition happens. So I, I don't see it being a protracted event. And they're very good also about off offloading to recycle what can be recycled to, which is great. But no, I don't, I don't see any issues with that.
No asbestos, huh?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you. Tracy, anybody there?
There are three, there are three attendees online, but no one has raised their hand.
Okay. So just a point that in seven minutes, we're going to hit the 10 o'clock mark. So we can continue on until that moment and then we'll take a vote here. So with that said, and you guys don't have anything else to say, and nobody wants to say anything, then we'll talk about it up here. So thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, kids, what are we thinking about this project? Margaret?
I'm the kid.
Yes.
I think it's a very attractive house. I understand the difficulty of that lot. And it's, and I also can see the challenge of it. And I do think it would be positive addition to the neighborhood to take down that, the houses there. I, I like most of the design of it. I think it's nice that you're going to save it for your kids. I think that would be a bigger challenge down the line. But that's going to be your problem. But I could make the, the findings and I can also understand the reason for the variances and I would approve of those.
Good. All right. Daniel, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think generally, I think, first of all, I think it's a very attractive design and, and I think it does fit well with the neighborhood. I think it, it does conform with the elements of the general plan. I appreciate the simulation from Altobol. I think that was, that was considerate of you to, to think about that. I think the significant thing of the variances, because don't get granted easily. But I, I think as the staff report indicated, I think we, we can meet the required findings for the variances. The the unique shape of the site, the lot size. And I think it really would be clearly infeasible to build within the current, current setbacks. So I can support this project.
Okay, that's good. All right, thank you. And Mr. Rizzo?
Well, I appreciate the design and the sensitivity to the neighborhood and the, and the properties and the environment, the surrounding environment. I think they did some of the highlights, I think, you know, the bio, bio retention area. Great. Mostly drought tolerant landscaping, other than some of the mature trees with low admittance watering. Great. The use of non-conforming materials supports the prevention of widespread fire. Great. Primary glazing wall facing open space away from the other house if it gets sold. Another good thing. And it does align like Daniel said, with a lot of our policies on land use and compatibility with the neighborhood and reinvesting into property upgrades. And on top of that, the entire neighborhood pretty much wrote a letter. So I like all those things lining up. On the variance, it's, it's just a definition of a variance. This, this lot is just non-conforming. We have a lot of non-conforming lots. This just happens to be in a neighborhood where there's minimum lot size of two 20,000 feet. And I was looking in, in the area, there's not a lot of lots that are actually 20,000 square feet. Quite frankly, I think it's in the minority. Corte Madera's definition of how you calculate the front yard setback, I, I, I thought it was a little difficult because I felt, I felt like both those property lines were so close. And I think I was the one who raised my hand about, you know, if that designation was on South Way, this house really, really is close to being conforming. But I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to support the variance request based on how the proposed project meets all the other development standards. And, you know, how unique this lot is and how it's shaped. The corner, and the corner does create some additional issues, but I do think that the, the house fits on that lot in that neighborhood. So I'm inclined to support all the findings as well.
Thank you, Jim. Clearly stated. I think the important thing is that the findings can be made for the variances, and I would be able to state that. It's an unusual lot, an unusual project, an unusual street. You've got design challenges, you had shape challenges, and you've met every one of the requirements by satisfying those requirements and variances. So I have really not a commentary about it. I think that Mr. Weaver, you chose a very good architect. And I think that she hit it out of the park for you, the application rate, the way it should be. That's Tracy's experience, but from where I sit and looking through those plans, and I see a lot of plans, that is a good application. So it's money well spent. And you're going to have a project that is comparatively a dream. Good luck. And let's take, let's get a motion and let's let the people go home and then we go home.
Yes.
Okay. We need a motion to extend the meeting. 30 minutes.
I'm moved to extend the meeting for 30 minutes.
A second.
Okay. We all say, ready? One, two, three.
Yes.
Aye. Keep talking. Okay. So then we need a motion to approve this application. You can read the lead in on the motion there.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve in the matter of design review, application PL 24-017 for the demolition of an existing three-story residence and the construction of a new 3,256-square-foot residence with an attached 300, oh, sorry, 400-square-foot garage. And variance application PL 24-0031 for the encroachment into the required front yard setback, rear yard setback, and street yard setback at 2 South Way.
A second over here.
Second.
All right, then. Roll call, please.
Great. Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
And Phil or Tracy?
Phil, you want to do this? One last. Following action by the planning commission, any decision of the planning commission may be appealed within 10 calendar days. The appeal fee is $300 and appeal forms can be obtained from the planning division at 310 O'Plants Drive.
All right. Thank you. Guys did a great job. Thank you. All right, then. We have very little to get through, but does anybody want to report on anything?
Okay. A few things. I'll just go through very quickly. One, that we will be having our grand opening ceremony here on July 2nd. So please mark your calendars if you'd like to attend that. And that the planning commission interviews are set for Tuesday. And so that's, they're going to be, I believe they're going to be set at 4:30. And so it sounds like we may have some on Zoom, some in person. So I've already talked to those that are, have, are interviewing, so that sounds like it's all good to go. And also just a note on that calendar for the 18th, there's also an item related to our building code. So there's going to be a repeal of our all-electric code. And then also a new ordinance somewhat related, but to extend our reach codes. So it'll be to a couple different things for, and it'll impact residential remodels of 750 square feet or more. So those applicants will need to do one of a menu of items related to energy efficiency. And then also that'll address EV readiness as well. So that will be going to the council on the 18th. It does bypass the commission because it is not part of the, the code that your commission oversees. Just wanted to note that for you as well.
Okay.
And that's it.
So oh, we got to talk about.
Actually, Chair Chase, I just wanted to say this is my last meeting with you at the planning commission. And I have enjoyed working with you tremendously. And it's been a great way to wrap up my 30-year planning career, and I will miss you all.
Bill, it's been such a pleasure to work with you. Thank you for everything. Each commissioner may say something, but I think it's been great to work with you.
I, I have worked with you a lesser number of years, but still significant. And I personally will miss you very much, your smile, your good cheer, your prompt return phone calls. But I hope that we get to see you again, and I sure hope we get to celebrate with you.
Yeah, and I would say the same. It's been short, but, but really sweet, getting to know you. And, and really appreciate the quality of, of your work and, and what you've done for the town and, and your support of the commission. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you again, Phil. Will you be there at the opening in a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
He gets his own car. Okay, so with that, let's adjourn this meeting.